Good evening, welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Sand Springs Board of Education. We appreciate everybody's presence tonight. My name is Mike Mullins, I'm setting in, I'm the Vice President, I'm setting in, our President is actually absent today, so it's gonna be a little bit awkward, we're only having four members of the board, but we appreciate you coming. With that, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Mullins?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Noggle?
Aye.
Spoon?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the opportunity for the public to be heard, and we had no one sign up for that, so we will move to one of our favorite parts of the session, is the Spirit Award. So, this is where, the way this works, is the teachers, administrative staff, and parents, they nominate special people that we recognize at board meetings, so tonight, I don't know who's first?
We're gonna go first.
We're gonna go first. Tracy and I are gonna tag-team this, we have a number of special people we want to recognize.
Who's excited for some awards? Yeah! Well, we're gonna start off first with Reese Wood, could you please join us up here? And their nominator is Ryan Bibbin, so could you please join us? Oh, okay.
Means we have to trust you with this, Ryan?
I'll get into it.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read what Mr. Bibbin said about Reese. Reese is a great example of academic excellence, leadership, and dedication to Charles Page High School. Recently named an Oklahoma Academic All-State recipient, one of the highest academic honors in state, Reese has demonstrated a commitment to excellence in the classroom and beyond. Reese is not only a scholar, but also an active leader in our school community. He is involved in numerous activities that showcase his dedication to personal growth and school pride, whether excelling in advanced coursework representing CPHS and extracurriculars, or serving as a mentor to his peers. Reese embodies what it means to be a Sandite. Beyond academics, Reese's character sets him apart. He is a role model for younger students, always leading by example with integrity, kindness, and strong work ethic. His contributions to our school, whether through academics, students' organizations, or community service, we have a lasting impact. Reese Wood represents the very best of Charles Page High School. Yeah.
Just real quick, Reese is probably out doing something. Reese Wood, get here, Reese Wood! Hey, this is typical Reese Wood fashion right here. I would say this about Reese, Ms. Campfield sums it up best. She says, "If Reese could, Reese would," and that is it. That's it. Reese does everything. You have something to say? Let's say something. Talk to these people about your plans for next year.
I apologize for the entrance, I am an actor, so usually I'm supposed to come in on my cue. But I've been, so for the last three years, back in my sophomore year, I joined the Sandite TV program at our school, which led me down the path of making films. I've made five so far, I've won seven awards for them all across the country, I've competed internationally with some of my films, and so next year I'm planning on going to the University of Tulsa for film studies on a full-ride scholarship.
Reese, this was for you, not for me.
Well, I'm going to give you this wonderful words of encouragement. Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah, we got a two bill.
Yeah.
We got your pictures back.
Reese Wood's a top 100 student in the state of Oklahoma.
You wanna do it again? Is Michelle with us? Michelle Spears? Come on up here, Michelle, please. And we want to ask Cory James Young, or CJ, to come and join us, please. Let me read what Michelle wrote about Cory, or CJ. CJ is the perfect candidate for the Sandite Spirit Award. As a youth all-star and leader with my brother's keeper in Tulsa, CJ has a genuine passion for helping young men in our community thrive from the classroom to the workplace. His work even caught the attention of Channel 6 News. CJ's dedication is not just inspiring, it's making a real difference right here in Tulsa and Sand Springs. He's exactly the kind of role model and leader that embodies the spirit of this award. CJ, thank you for what you do, making a difference. So, Michelle, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I think that's good. I'm proud of him, I'm so proud of him.
CJ, we want you to tell us a little bit about the program.
Hey, my name is Cory CJ Young. About MBK, it's a great program, they give us a lot of exposure to scholarships and everything, so yeah, just things we want to do outside of high school or college.
Good, thank you. I think we have three of them that are similar.
So, we're gonna do them all together. So, we have Tristan Brown, can you join us up here, please? Chloe Hammond?
I don't think she's here.
Okay. And then Melissa Roche, is it Roche? Did I say that right?
It's Rocha.
Rocha, sorry about that.
And Andy? We want Andy to join us too, please. Let me just read what, first off, what Andy wrote about Tristan. He said, "I'm nominating Tristan Brown for the Sandite Spirit Award because he learned, memorized, and refined a solo called 'Go Tell It on a Mountain' by Patsy Ford Sims in five days earned a superior rating with a medal and certificate at the OSSAA Solo and Ensemble Contest in front of the judge, Norma Browning, on Saturday, March the 1st." We might ask you to kind of recite part of that for us tonight, does that be okay?
This is a lot less people.
Very good, so, this is for you. And Andy, I'm gonna give you this one for Chloe, she's not here. But Chloe did something very similar, it says that she did the solo called "Kumbaya", now I'd really like to hear that one, in five days, also got a superior rating and a medal certificate in front of the judges on that same day. And then Melissa Rocha? For Sandite Spirit Award because she learned, memorized, and refined a solo called "I Will Sing You the Stars" by Mark Burrows in five days and earned a superior rating with a medal and certificate at the OSSAA Solo and Ensemble Contest in front of the judge on Saturday, March the 1st. So, you wanna sing part of that for us?
We're missing our accompanist.
Ah, there you go. I would love for you to just tell a bit about the program.
Yeah, so, the main reason that they got these awards is they literally went from zero to hero. Monday, they got the music, we just started on it. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they all memorized, and by Friday, we were already refining into deeper levels of music than what I would normally go in with just my normal choirs. And so, they were able to perform at a higher level than what I would normally be able to teach, and they only did it in five days.
Now, somebody needs to let Chloe know that he's got a gift card for her as well, because, you know, he might get the certificate, but make sure she gets that gift card, too.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, one, two, three. Congrats, guys. We need Jackson Scout Trauter up here, please. And Ty Bowling nominated you, so we'll have him up here as well. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good. Well, it shows that you are a 2025 Large East All-State selection for, is that 190 pounds?
Right.
Wowza. And then, the 2025 6A State Runner-Up for 190 pounds. That is amazing, amazing. So, you know that these athletes really work hard, they put a ton of work and time into what they love, and so we appreciate you and all that you do. Ty, would you like to say a few things?
Scout was a four-year starter for us, he was a four-time state qualifier, he was a two-time state placer, he was fourth last year, and then this year he made the state finals, and then he was also an all-state athlete, so he'll represent Sand Springs at the large state games in July. He has recently signed a scholarship to wrestle at Cali College, so his leadership on and off the mat, both vocally and the way he just does things, is gonna be greatly missed, but we hope that he can come back, you know, during the Thanksgiving break and the Christmas break, and show the rest of the Sandites what he's learned at Cali College.
Kevin, you need to join me too, buddy. We're asking Kaya Dover to come and join us. Kevin Avi nominated Kaya, says, "Kaya, did I say your name right?"
Yes.
Kaya, placed third in this year's state meet, she squatted 335 pounds, benched 165 pounds, tied for the school record, and deadlifted 350 pounds for a total of 850 pounds lifted. She's the school's first three-time state qualifier and is the second to be a two-time state placer. Kaya improved each year that she made it to state, 2003 we didn't, 23 we did not place, 2024 fifth place, and 2025 third place. Amazing, amazing, so. Would you like to share something?
This is a relatively young program, four years, and in her three years, she qualified all three years. You know, not only am I proud of the amount of weight she's lifted and the success she's had, but it's, it's, she's just an amazing person. Can't ask for a better human being in my program than Kaya.
And we need Paige to come and join us this time, come on up here, please, along with Hope Bump. Do you want to read this one?
Sure. Alright, are you ready? Okay. Take a deep breath. Well, you were nominated for a great award, and it says from Ms. Paige, "I am honored to nominate Hope Bump for the Spirit Award in recognition of her outstanding achievements, leadership, and dedication both on and off the court. Hope embodies the values of hard work, perseverance, and excellence, setting a standard of commitment that inspires her teammates and peers. Athletically, Hope is, has had a phenomenal career. She averaged 21 points per game this season and was named Offensive Player of the Year for our district. She reached a major milestone by scoring 1,000 career points, and an achievement that speaks volumes about her consistency and skill. One of the most memorable performances was..." Well, I don't have the rest of that, but I'm sure the performance was absolutely amazing.
Where are we at?
Went away. Do you have it, Bo?
Dun dun dun.
Touch the keys.
Okay, where was I?
I don't know, right there, 39-point game.
Where?
Right at the top.
Oh, 39-point game in the Wilburton Tournament showcasing her ability to rise to the occasion. Her efforts did not go unnoticed as she was recently named the OBGCA All-State Team. Beyond her athletic accomplishments, Hope is equally impressive in the classroom, maintaining a 4.0 GPA. She exemplifies what is meant, what it means to be a student athlete balancing the demands of academics and athletics with grace and determination. Her hard work has paid off as she has signed to continue her basketball career at Southern Arkansas University." Great job. Hope Bump is more than just a great athlete, she is a role model, a leader, and a student who represents our school with pride. Her dedication to excellent sportsmanship and commitment to both her team and academics make her a truly deserving recipient of the Spirit Award. Good job!
So, something I didn't get to add, I know that was pretty long anyways, but something I didn't get to add to that is she actually also, just a few days ago, was recently announced as an OCA All-State recipient as well, so she was OGBCA and OCA, which is a huge accomplishment because OCA is 4, 5, and 6A on the east side of the state, and they only choose 10 people. So, and she was also an OCA All-Star, so huge accomplishments. Her work ethic goes unmatched, I mean, it speaks volumes just in everything that I was able to share with you guys, so we're very proud of her.
Okay, I didn't prepare a speech, so bear with me, but I moved here my junior year, and just the community and everybody around me, I felt it from the start, so it is an honor to play for Sand Springs and represent.
Thank you.
We get the youngest member of the Sandite Spirit Award recipients today. Nolan, come on up. This is my buddy Nolan Van Trees, he's, I've been in your life ever since you were born, I think, so. Nolan's a BMX rider, he rides for Sand Springs. It says here that Nolan has made a splash in Sandite BMX. He has accumulated award after award this year, including when he won first place in the 5-and-under category at the USA BMX Show Me State National Race in Springfield, Missouri. In March, he was featured on Channel 2 for his outstanding BMX performance. He may be one of our youngest Sandites, but big dreams start small. He has exemplified the Sandite spirit and can't wait to see what's in store for him next. Although you'd probably like to drive yourself, I think you're gonna have to let your mom and dad take you to use that Sonic card, and here's your plaque. That's a first. Yeah. Alright, last but not least, I get the honor and the privilege to hand out this award, the Sandite Pace Air Award, to a special lady who's been involved with Sand Springs Schools for 50 years now. And Diane, come on up. Come on, Ms. Noel, you come up here too. Says here, "For decades, Diane has been the backbone of the school, holding everything together with unwavering dedication. Since 1976, the year the United States was celebrating its bicentennial, gas was just 59 cents a gallon, and Rocky was hitting theaters. She has been the go-to person for anything and everything, knowing the ins and outs of the school like no one else. She starts her mornings early, often before the sun rises, trying to find substitutes and ensuring the day runs smoothly. Never calling in herself, always dependable, and working with an unmatched work ethic, she keeps things running seamlessly, providing unwavering support to students, teachers, and staff. Her commitment and knowledge make her an irreplaceable part of the school, a true pillar of strength and reliability."
So, today we had 70's Day at the school to celebrate Ms. Stevens, and we have a t-shirt for her. I also wanted to add that in 1976, that's the year that Apple Computers was in a garage, being made in apples, so that's a pretty big deal. Also, a new house was like $43,000, that's pretty awesome. A new car was like $4,100, that sounds nice right about now. And VHS versus Betamax was heating up, so if you had a VCR, you were pretty cool. So, anyway, we love Ms. Stevens, she is the glue that holds the school together, and we would be totally lost without her, so we appreciate you so much.
Angela, so, hang on, hang on.
Sand Springs Schools, that's like my second family, I love them. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for allowing us to recognize and celebrate successes in Sand Springs, we love doing that. Now, we get to the part of the meeting when it's fun on our part, that we move from these celebrations to a business meeting. We would love to have everyone stay with us, we usually finish about, yeah, 10 o'clock, but if you desire to leave, to go home and do homework, I know some students out here, they've got homework to do, so they're all gonna go home and do homework, so if you need, if you desire to leave, now would be a wonderful time. But thank you all for coming and joining us tonight. So good to see you, you doing okay?
Yeah.
How's the kids?
They're good, everybody's good.
Really good, Stacy. It's amazing, that is cool.
I think you just said, "Can I go to Sonic?", but I'm not sure.
Clearing out the room, Ms. Dirk, I'll ask you to proceed with us, we will be on item number six, the student empowerment.
Absolutely.
And staff empowerment.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. My first note was really about what we just awarded Nolan. That was cool, but you guys have to understand, I want to say it publicly, so it's impertunity, but those kinds of things wouldn't be possible without generous people and the work and effort of our staff. So, I, one more time, I've said it before, but Erin and Bo Noggle with their generous donation of $10,000 to the BMX program, and I, I'm gonna add lib a little bit, so sorry, just forgive me, but I was just thinking through, as we were awarding people, our efforts for student engagement, and I think it's really important to maybe talk about publicly, the effort we make to say yes to programs. So, I made a list of them as I was sitting here, so I just have to kind of read them, because it's pretty impressive, and I want to think other districts in the state do it, but it's just an effort to just say yes. In the last, definitely five years, but certainly more recent than that, we've added BMX, archery at Clyde Boyd Middle School, we're getting to reflect that at the high school next year, fishing, bowling, clay sports club, also a generous donation by, again, the Noggles, Erin and Bo, chess club, welding, girls weightlifting, girls wrestling, esports, also within the last three to four years, again, a very generous donation by the Noggles. I can't say enough about the kind of effort we work to put out things that we think will keep students engaged, and I have to, that list is just, in my mind, really impressive alongside all the extracurriculars that we had in place already. So, just to know that the importance of academics are at the top of our list, along with student safety and all of those things, but truly, it's about the whole child, and figuring out what it is that absolutely enlightens them, makes a light bulb come on, that says, "I want to stay engaged." So, something to be said for our team and for folks like you guys that support us in that way, so, just a thought.
Thank you for that, Ms. Dirk, and I want to add one thing to that, I was at the state Capitol, had the privilege of visiting with some of our representatives and senators, and the main topic of discussion was competition, competition amongst students to come to our school as opposed to other schools, and it makes me excited when I see that we can offer programs that entice or allow kids to come here and do things that we didn't do years ago, that, we're excited, I mean, we can do things here, we got all the things that you mentioned, plus world-class education, we'll compete with anybody bringing kids to Sand Springs.
Anyway, I, thank you for that, because I would say that.
If legislation wants competition, we got it. If they want school choice, we got it.
Exactly.
Come and choose us, we'll take care of the kids in many different ways.
Exactly. You know, it's about finding things, you know, we have the traditional stuff that keep kids engaged, athletics and such, but there are so many ways that kids find talents, that we just want to make sure we're turning over every rock, unlocking every just key to skills that they can have. So, anyway, I needed to mention that, it's not part of my notes really, but I think it was an important piece to say publicly. We have calculated our current year retention rate- We have calculated our current year retention rate. I had a small meeting with Ms. Spoon, our newest member tonight, so welcome to the table. She was reflecting on the resignation list that you're gonna see in the consent agenda, and it seems big. But what you need to remember is this is the time of year where Ms. Arnold works like crazy relentlessly to get the letters of intent out, make sure that we get them back timely. They do the Tuesday after spring break, and when you do the calculation about teacher retention currently, we're gonna lose a couple more. There's no doubt over the summer, something will happen, and you know, there's a few more that will exit. But right now, we're sitting at a retention rate of 93%. That is amazing. And so while it looks like a long list, the truth is, now's the time. That's when we know, and then we immediately post and get those up. I would say, if you look at the postings that are on our website, 11 of those postings are certi-, certi-, oh my gosh, emergency certified positions that we already have in place with a person, but it is a requirement by the State Department to continue that emergency cert, to post them. So while it looks like there's more than what we have, it is more than what we have in terms of real positions. So again, I, that's great news. That is fantastic news. Still needs math teachers. Publicly, I'm shamelessly saying, if you teach math, want to come to a great district, you need to come apply because it doesn't get better. I also attached the ESEA Grant Performance Review. I say this all the time. Claudia is sitting in the background being very quiet, but they accepted our application with no other actions necessary, which sounds subdued and menial and all of that, in one short letter with barely two sentences. But it's a mountain. I'm not gonna lie. She has, and she's a team of really two people, I guess Jamie Conner makes three with 24 and Laura, maybe four, but truly, at the helm sits Claudia in the back, just working behind the scenes, getting it done. Wrapping up Esser, there was a bunch of reporting regarding those projects that brought us in some money, but a lot of work, and she has handled it like a pro. So kudos to Ms. Smith. The other thing I want to mention, we have three administrator postings up as well. As you know, our facilities operations director, the director of compliance, and the virtual academy, not virtual, well, it is virtual, that's paired with that, but then Page Academy principal. We're getting some really great responses from those. I believe we ended with 11 postings or applications for maintenance. We closed it after that. We called literally almost all of them, interviewed by phone, and then we were bringing four back. We have brought two already, but two more coming back for in-person interviews, and we'll have someone named by Friday. My point is, in all those positions, we're getting a pretty significant applicant pool, which I think is, number one, great, but also turning kind of a corner to people applying for those positions. They're hard, they're stressful, they're a lot of work, but it feels good to have an applicant pool that is experienced and motivated, to be honest. So really proud of where we're at in the student and teacher empowerment. So unless you have a question, I will move on.
Any questions, everybody on the board related to that? Please, Ms. Durkey, move on to the next item.
Okay, this is a review of finance strategies, including facility updates. I always attach the OASA revenue report. It's the same old, I don't want to repeat my words from last time, but we're looking at a flat budget, if that, little decrease in students and a reflection with a little inflation. So all that is a recipe for, we gotta be careful, essentially. There's some bills out there regarding teacher pay raises, adding steps to the scale. All of that is, has to have funding behind it, have teeth, so I really am not reflecting that any of that will happen. But we're in good shape. We manage well. We always forecast ahead, so nobody's worried about any kind of fiscal instability. Just, you know, a little bit of knowledge, knowing that that's the state that we're in. Keep in mind that there is a huge savings account at the state level with revenue that they save for in case there's a deficiency, which we think there's gonna be. Just know that a little push by, let's keep it healthy, would be helpful. I don't know if the legislature will have the desire to do that this year, but the rainy day fund is what it's for. So just know that we're looking at our budget going, we gotta make some decisions about moving on to next year.
In anticipation, we're looking at a flat budget coming from the state, and that would allow, require us to kind of have a flat budget as well.
Absolutely. Yep. We're asking our team, too, because when we have a decrease in enrollment, we won't have first quarter statistical numbers till June, which means when Mr. Wine prepares the first budget in June, those are projections. When we know our student enrollment's down on top of that, then we adjust accordingly, and we're having conversations about what positions would it be possible to absorb without effect? And those are the conversations we're having with our admin team, being very intentional about not decreasing services to kids, however, making sure we're stable. That's a real thing, and it's always something, all of you, well, not all of you, but if, I know Mr. Nogal and Mr. Mullins were with the district, and sitting in your seats in 2017, when I was, that was my first year as superintendent, and in 16, we knew that was coming, the revenue failure was coming. And so we're not at that level yet, by any stretch of the imagination, but if you'll remember, we've had about 28 positions. Most of our budget's people, and that's what I think our public needs to understand. When you think about the percentage of money that goes into what runs a district, 89% is people. So we're very heavy on personnel, so just need to know that. Ms. LaHueber is sitting in the audience. She's amazing as well. Received notice that we received a Pathways to Partnership grant, it's a three-year one, boosting our students with disabilities. I quoted about the purpose, which is to access effective transition programming. You all know that we run a pretty pristine transition academy, so Ms. LaHueber, you might want to elaborate a tad on. You can, there's a mic. We have a.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
It is a three-year. I promise it'll wake me up.
The grant is a three-year, $120,000 grant that we received, and we are going to be able to create transition programs at the middle school level for our students who will eventually move up to our Transition Academy. So with the funding, we are going to be able to hire a support paraprofessional to be trained as a job coach, which is something we really already do at the high school and the Transition Academy. And then also, what I'm really excited about is starting two businesses at the middle school for the students that are in those programs. So one of the classrooms is going to do like a plant business, where they grow and sell plants. And then the other class is going to do a mobile spirit store there on campus at the middle school. And so, you know, hopefully, it'll be, you know, a time that maybe they can set up and sell at athletic events, or, you know, a middle school parent night, something where they'll really be able to use those skills. And so I'm just really excited about it. You remember when we were putting the transition in place, Transition Academy, you guys like had to steal the mic away from me because I just wanted to keep talking about it. And so now that we're trickling it down to the middle school, I'm really excited about it, too, so.
Questions for Carrie.
So Carrie, you say Transitional Academy, that's the Page Academy we're talking about? No?
No. Transition Academy is the, it's in the same building as Page Academy and the Sand Springs Community Services. It is the program for our students 18 to 22 with significant disabilities. Yep.
She will talk forever, so, you know, I'm teasing. She, it's going really well, and she's, I can't go on and on enough about my team that sits in the section that just do the work. It's, it feels like we're stretched paper-thin, and I know they feel it at times, but then it doesn't stop them from doing the extra, the above and beyond that they don't have to do. That was a competitive grant that we rewarded, so just keeps coming. So any question, any other questions? I'm sure she'd be happy to answer them.
Bond projects this summer, what's the deal with?
So we are on schedule. We, as you know, the admin was a little off schedule because we were really hoping to be done by June, definitely by the end, by summer. And I was even hoping by the herbal affair that will happen this weekend, and you all know that that was delayed because of just making sure that the building was stable on the redesign. But we're set to complete in July, and you're watching the beams go up. We're talking about a beam signing. We're getting close to needing to actually plan that. We haven't done it yet because we've been pretty busy, but it's coming along. We don't have a lot of banging going on, but we do have beams coming up with swaying at, you know, the windows, so there's that. And they wave at us on the way up. So far, they haven't busted through, so that's good. I'm kind of joking, but so, seriously. Clyde Boyd is on target for completion when it's designed to be completed. We just, here's what we're facing, you guys. When we come to the whole inflation element, we received an email today, and by the way, we're within budget by every stretch of the imagination, but here's what's happening. Liz emailed today and said, hey, by the way, tariffs are creating what percentage of an increase?
Yeah, she said 25 to 30%, and we had about a day to be able to basically give them the okay.
On what package? Are.
It was Boyd, and it was, it was something, I believe, with lighting.
Lighting package. I almost said that, but I want to make sure I was right. So the lighting package, but, so you're looking at, and she said it's a $600,000 line item, but add 20 to 30% on top of it, that can blow your budget pretty quick. And so they're working really hard, KKT, they did the turnaround of the day, to go ahead and do the order for the lighting materials so that we're not paying up charge. I think I said at our last meeting, Josh had indicated that we just need to watch kind of what's going on with, you know, what impact tariffs are having on being able to get product. So we are, and I appreciate the team that's taking care of us to say, let's go ahead and buy it, we gotta go. So we had to give instant, basically instant approval today for carrying on that line item specifically. So it's going well, but again, one of those pieces that we really have to keep an eye on. I think that's.
Just add to that real quick, the contractor, I was sitting in a meeting and they made a comment that they were worried about tariffs on the air conditioning equipment. I said, where's it coming from? They said Aon. I said, it's two miles down the road.
Right.
And they said, yeah, but tariffs will be attached to the steel and all the components that go into that as well. So, you know, we think it might be right here, there may be some challenges that we're gonna see, and I guess with the light fixtures, the same way, that's a big.
I think it's gonna hit everything. I lead her ship was a couple of weeks ago, and Dana Weber spoke, did a great job, but just the effect on the materials they buy, because some of that, I think, comes from Canada. And so it is a thing, and we're just, you know, having to be, having to be enlightened about what's going on and really aware of what's going on around us. The last thing I would say, Ms. Kavagney's another pat on the back. Dave had a setback a little bit. Maybe reach out if you can, think about it. So, but because we are where we're at with our facilities, she's jumped back in, so I've scheduled a meeting for Friday afternoon to kind of help us through some of the summer work effort, which is great. She's that person. She did say, this, really though, this time, might be my last year, which, you know, so deserved, but just know she's struggling a little bit, and it'd be great if you have her, you know, phone number, if you could give her a text, that would be meaningful, I think, to her. So unless you have a question, we can move on. Communication and community involvement, pre-registration for OLR, which is our pre-registration for next year's students, current ones. We make a concerted effort to get those students registered by the end of the school year. It's always a trick. I believe we have at least half of our kids who haven't pre-registered, so tell your friends and family, if you haven't pre-registered your students, please do so, because it helps the plan. We know that most of the Garfield kids are gonna come back, and I use Garfield as just an example. It's happening across the district, but we know that, but we still don't have, we don't know that until they actually go through that process. So we've put it out, we'll continue to project that out, but it is critical for our families to do that.
Ms. Durkey, that process is just the kids take a questionnaire and they return it to the school?
It's online. Yep. It's all online, and we've given out explicit instructions. I know Lisa will be posting that out. We'll probably be initiating some texts to folks and all of that, because it's just helpful to know, to, especially in a budget year, we're going, is there a way? Do you have some space to absorb something? To know, maybe I don't need four teachers in third grade at a certain site or whatever. So that's something we'll push out a lot. We completed our April podcast this week, this last week, and we got to introduce Ms. Spoon to the community as our newest board member. She loved it, and she's, but she did great. It's always kind of unnerving. I don't much like it, but once you have done it, you go, okay. But it was fun just to go live. Lisa promised she would edit it, so if she's feeling better, have you watched it yet? Is it out yet?
It is.
It's out. Have you watched it?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, she watched. I never watch it. That's good advice, too.
Oh, there's a reason why I had meant on it.
No. Maybe, that's an idea. Bo, get ready.
At one point, I did have to tell her, don't put that in there.
Yeah. Cut that out.
I get the beep button.
There you go. Yeah, I hear you. Coffee with Cabinet will be at Charles Page High School, the 28th of April at 8:45. That's a, that's a time change, because people don't drop off, school doesn't start till late 30, so the goal is to get parents in after kids are in class. So if you would, we'd love to see you guys come. When you show up, I think it's a symbol that, you know, you're also being open and transparent with our community and parents, and so we'll see. We, I love this, by the way. I like making ourselves available for people to come and talk with us and understand what's on their minds.
When you do one of those on Friday, I'll be there.
Okay, well, noted. Noted, okay.
Some people work in the morning.
That's true. You're right. Outside, too. If there's any questions, please, any questions on the community?
They move on to health and related safety.
So I'm gonna start with Kristin Arnold, because she's worked through accreditation on the fly, because you know that we've had some struggles. Ms. Ogles been out a little bit, and she's working from home right now, but recovering, and so, but we need her, because she has immense amount of knowledge that helps us through accreditation. And so this spring, safety-related topics were reviewed, and I just am gonna say, we did great. She flew through it, but we had to make sure we had everything documented on CPR, first aid training, AEDD devices, emergency response plans, safety drills, just to name a few. Ms. Arnold may have some extras that she wants to talk about, but we were able to show evidence on all of them. I don't know if you want to add anything?
It really was a team member.
It was, but. She made, she did. She recreated the note, but it was amazing. Sherry Pearson has been researching whether we're gonna be able to provide CEP for students this year. It's the free breakfast and lunch for everyone. We knew that it would be iffy. We had the carryover to make sure we would stay physically sound and providing it for one year. I asked Cassidy to give kind of a rough estimate of how much we were into our carryover this year.
Yeah, I think it'll be around $400,000 to $500,000. So, and we budgeted in, I mean, a huge decrease in local sources of revenue. If you look at our actuals from last year versus our second revised, I mean, that was over a $300,000 dip itself. So it was kind of a trial year for it, but we did have $1.7 million carryover in there, and so it was a good year, too, to test it out, so.
We just can't have that kind of dip and be solid. So it looks like we're not gonna be able to do it. We're gonna need to start communicating that out really soon. The tough part about that is, we're now in the process of collecting free reduced forms again. A lot of them are direct cert, but that factors into economically disadvantaged numbers, which is a weight for us. So there's a lot of moving parts about low-income eligibility and all those things that factor in a lot about finance and money, funding coming in. So we've got our work cut out for us, and we'll, we will do that. And I think that concludes health and safety at this point.
Any questions for Ms. Durkey on any of the items from above? Ms. Durkey, walk us through the consent agenda, please.
There's just a couple of things I want to point out. Number 20, which is not something typically I point out, but I do want to make a note of this one, and that's the out-of-state travel request, because I just think it is so cool that our Clyde Boyd archery team has a bid for nationals, which is fantastic in Utah. So they are.
A school that some teachers want to take middle school kids out of state.
Right? I know, but I'm just telling, Gina Myers is the real deal, and it's amazing how much money. I wish Angela Noel was still here, because they are raising money like crazy to go to Utah. It's fun. Like, that is just fun. If you've never seen, you gotta come watch that, because all the kids have. because all the kids have real bows and arrows with a real target in front of them.
As to what? The suction cup with it?
No, no, they're real arrows and she'll tell you, stand over there. I think Sean was doing some video for the Teacher of the Year and, I mean, it's on command. Whistles have meanings. One means something, two whistles means something else, and those kids know it. And they, anyway, it's fabulous.
I will say, it's amazing that for a first year, to make it all the way that far.
Right.
And to have the funding for it as well. So that tells you that Sand Springs is excited about something like that.
Well, it needs to go to the high school too. We have a class of eighth graders that are. She did. Oh, Sean, sorry. I hate that for you.
Did she give you an apple?
I put it on your head.
Did you have to hold it in your mouth or on your?
He stuck it right on his head. No, that did not happen. Letter G, Sarah Finelli is our Sandite Learning Center Director, i.e. they keep the babies of our children or our teachers and staff. And Cheyenne Wood is one of our teachers. These guys asked to go to a conference in Grapevine, Texas for Frog Street, which is our curriculum. I know that sounds crazy, but we have curriculum for our babies through age three up to four. And so I said yes because you know how I feel about professional development. So anyway, so there you go. Those are two that I thought were a good highlight.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Just double checking, graduation starts at seven thirty?
Um, we will verify that. Is that what it says?
You have here, but I'm just making sure because it seems.
I'm going to.
I thought it was always at seven, but.
Let me check on that, Mr. Noggle. If it says seven thirty, that's probably right, best looking right now. But you're right, it usually starts at seven, so let's get some right information, make sure we're, we're doing that. Yeah, should. It is seven thirty, but since you said that, I can't, I will be checking up on that, making sure because we don't want to be late.
That's a late night, just.
It is, yeah, yeah. She can't wear your pajamas.
Mr. Durkey, I have a question about item twenty-four, and it looks like twenty-four might be related to forty-five?
I'm getting there. That was my next one.
Okay.
Yep. Item twenty-four is Arbiter. You have not seen that before. Arbiter is an organization that will allow us to have referees and they take care of the payment of such. What happens is OSSAA gives us the referee. We don't get to choose and hire our own referees for a reason. That would lend itself to favoritism, so we don't get to do that. OSSAA assigns them. However, we still have to pay for them. What has happened over the past couple of years, if those folks are employed and a member of the teacher retirement system, we have to pay a T R S burden on them. Arbiter, we've learned, is a company that takes care of that for us. So we have them, we trend, Cassidy, you might go over the kind of the schemata of how that works.
Yeah, so this was brought up in our teacher retirement audit, like right before I had, you know, gotten here. And this was one of the things we got dinged on, was that we were paying officials out of activity funds, but they were current teacher retirement participants, which you would think teaching in the classroom and, and officiating are, you know, two separate things. But, so we've been onboarding these officials that are current participants. And so Arbiter takes that out of it for us. So we just pay directly to Arbiter and it's very user-friendly. Ms. Young, our activity funds clerk, and I have been looking at it, been talking to Mr. Sitten in his office at the athletics. And I think it would just make everyone's worlds a lot easier. And Arbiter made sure to tell us when we were looking into it that we were the only ones in our district that did not use it currently.
Or class, probably.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, maybe so, class.
Right, because our district.
He said division, so I was trying to figure out what that was. But yeah, it, it'll help us out a bunch with the T R S portion.
Right.
I mean, you're talking about withholdings, like federal withholdings, teacher retirement, all that, that's right now being paid out of payroll and reimbursed by activity, just so we can do the teacher.
To give you an idea, like one of our recipients of pay, it was like a hundred bucks. So if you're paying a T R S burden on that in full, it's sixteen dollars. So we have to figure out a way to pay sixteen dollars to.
And they're coming up to do all the onboarding.
Right.
For sixty dollars.
For us.
Yes.
For us to learn their system.
No, no, no.
No, for us to make sure we're covering our bases on T R S, teacher retirement.
When he says onboarding, he means to go through H R.
Correct. For that one evening of officiating.
It's a lot of work, so.
How does this impact the under-the-table payments? No, I'm just kidding.
We need to strike that last statement.
I would like to clarify that.
I don't feel like I can respond.
How much, how much is it extra? How much extra is it costing us to be a member of Arbitrator?
So Arbiter, this is a, they can't do anything less than a one-year deal. And so now that we're kind of at the end of this fiscal year, it's through the rest of this year through June thirtieth and then all of next year. And so that total amount, there's fourteen hundred dollars for the prorated year. And then for year one, it's thirty-six hundred dollars. There's some onboarding that's part of that that will go away. So I mean, I would say for, for thirty-five hundred dollars, it's, it's well worth it.
You did have that in there. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
But then item forty-five says that we're making a separate checking account to pay for officials?
Yeah, so that's because in our general fund, we have positive pay to check, like checks that are coming through. We don't currently have that for activity fund. And so this just keeps it clean. It keeps the integrity of our main big activity account. But this would be a separate account just for Arbiter, and I, we just think it's the cleanest way to do it. The only things coming in and out of there are for payment of officials.
You can track it and then you don't have exposure with activity funds for that much, you know what I mean? Because we carry a big balance in our activity funds that just segregates it, yeah. It's new.
Are you trying to do two different paychecks then?
No, 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 no. It's just, so think about, it's one pot of money, but we have, we segregate activity from a general fund in our system.
It's a transfer of money from what's holding in our activity account to this account, this new account, solely for the payment of Arbiter, for these officials.
Good question.
Any other questions about any item on the consent agenda?
By the way, just one more mention, you will see that yearly. So while we talked about it tonight, just know that Arbiter will become, oh, that's that referee thing. You'll, you'll recognize it next year.
And that's referees for all the sports?
Yes, yeah.
Even judges for debate and stuff like that?
It's OSSAA.
Then they do debate and band and.
Anything OSSAA is directed by that agency. So any, any support program that would have a competition under OSSAA, they would do officiating.
For middle school and high school.
Right.
Item twenty-nine?
Yes.
What, who gets those?
So we check them out. So there's an occasion, we bought several during COVID, but virtual students for sure can get them. But there are occasions where internet is out district-wide and so we literally run hotspots to sites so that we can run programs. So it's a pretty important piece. If you don't have them. We've had some outages lately via A T and T. I know it's been kind of citywide or maybe region-wide. We, it's, you don't understand how dependent you are on, you can't get on the network until you can't get on the network. And there was one episode this year, two full days almost, that we couldn't get on. I don't know if Sean, you want to expand on that, but it's the hotspot question. Who uses it? Where do they go?
That pretty much sums it up. I mean, we, we've been doing that for years prior to COVID. But, and since COVID, we've, we've lowered that contract a little bit, but it's for virtual academy students. But it's also for, we've had, we've had situations where employees have needed it because they've needed to complete work outside of work hours. And specifically just to the outages, that situation, it, it did come in handy in those situations because they were able to scramble and, and deploy those hotspots to sites where they needed to get paperwork done. For instance, like when Kristin Arnold was working on. Yes, exactly. So, and then to the, to the outages that we had, a lot of that happened because we have a dedicated fiber ring that's, that's through Lightstream, but the last mile of service is through A T and T and that outage occurred because of A T and T. So the day that, the days that that happened, they became very important to us.
Also, before we move on from consent, I want to mention item twenty-six, and this is new. Oklahoma Human Services Contract for Twenty-Five School-Based Social Worker Program. And Claudia, again, is sitting in the background. This is a competitive grant. Claudia, do you want to say a couple of words about what that is? We don't have postings up yet. We're working on it, but kudos to Claudia. I actually would not put this, wouldn't post until we got the contract because, you know, we need to make sure we're getting the funding, but.
So we consulted other school districts that take advantage of this grant that's available through D H S. And we will get an elementary and a secondary family school-based specialist. And they help link the students and families with the community. So anything we can help them with, like finding a doctor and referrals and anything in the connection between engaging people. So I've talked to other districts in the area and they thought that was really good for those, for them. So we have, Kristin just gave me the postings tonight and I'll be reviewing those for accuracy. And we'll be posting for two new school-based specialists until twenty-eight. I think it's June of twenty-eight.
It's good. Any questions for Claudia? She really did take the lead on, on that one. Okay, that is all I had.
Back to the Wi-Fi for saying we're putting on buses too. I, I see that we've putting a plan to put.
We have a separate Wi-Fi system for the buses, but any of our satellite sites that went down, we, they immediately brought those out to us and we were able to use the Wi-Fi for, you know, pulling up student information, answering phone calls, you know, parent information that was immediately needed and accessible. So kudos to them for getting them out as quickly as they did, but they were very useful.
Do the kids use it on the bus?
Some of them do, yes.
Any other questions about any consent agenda item? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Noggle.
I'll second.
And a second by Ms. Hanlon. Any other questions? Call for vote, please, on the consent agenda.
Okay, I just got confirmation from Kendra. It is seven thirty, the graduation.
Thank you, Beth. So seven thirty it is.
Thank you.
Seven thirty, okay, thank you.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Mullins?
Aye.
You tricked us and changed the order. I was ready to. We will now move to, I was going to say, what? Action items, item number thirty-five, any desire for executive session to discuss the employment recommendations? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the employment recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five, which is one paraprofessional at Garfield Steam Academy. Item number thirty-six.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Mr. Noggle, a second by Ms. Hanlon, to approve the employment recommendations of a paraprofessional at Garfield. Any questions? Call for vote, please.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Aye.
Spoon?
Aye.
Mullins?
Aye. Item thirty-seven, I would entertain a motion, or I'll make the motion to, to go into executive session to discuss the resignation of a teacher and also combine that with item number thirty-nine to, at the executive session to discuss the resignation of two teachers. And I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Noggle?
Nay.
Spoon?
Aye.
I vote yes.
Sorry. Mullins?
We will make this very short.
We will make this very short.
Thank you all for your indulgence and for not making our chairs be at the lowest position when we sat back down in them. That's happened before. I don't know who does that, but you have something special on your...
You're a squirrel. What?
Is this an inside show?
We are now in open session. The time is 8:16 PM. While in executive session, the board discussed the following. While in executive session, the board held confidential communications concerning the employment status and resignation agreement with Stacy Isaac pursuant to Oklahoma Statute Title 25, 307, B1 and 7. Also, while in executive session, the board held confidential communications concerning the employment status and resignation agreement of Mark Garrett pursuant to Oklahoma Statutes Title 25, 307, B1 and 7. No other matters were discussed, and no votes were taken. So, we are now back in open session, and I believe we are at item... May I help you with this?
38.
Item number 38. As such, I would entertain a motion to approve the resignation agreement of Stacy Isaac to accept Stacy Isaac's resignation.
I'll make the motion. We accept.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Noggle and a second by Ms. Handlin, or Ms., I didn't hear who said it, Ms. Handlin.
Yes.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Seeing none, ask her a vote, please, Beth.
Handlin.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye. Item number 40. Entertain a motion to approve the resignation agreement with Mark Garrett and accept Mark Garrett's resignation.
I'll make the motion. We accept Mark Garrett's resignation.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Noggle, a second by Ms. Handlin, to accept the resignation agreement with Mark Garrett. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, ask her a vote, please.
Handlin.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye, thank you. Item number 41. We have a number of policies. Ms. Durkey, could you walk us through the policies, please?
Sure can, and I may need the help. I think Kristen has the copies, and we've been... So, these were first read last month. The non-discrimination policy in letter A was renaming the Title IX coordinators. So, that was a simple revision to include Ryan Bivin. DPA was a simplification of teacher qualifications, removing language referring to "no child left behind," which is archaic at this point. Personnel leave for certified and support staff. I'm going to talk about personal leave for certified, because we did have SCA meeting today. They've been asking for additional. We had a situation this year where, as one of our teachers that has been with us forever took some time prior to Christmas break for a wedding. It was approved, but current policy lent itself to a pretty large deduction based on daily rate for teachers. And we ended up having to hold quite a chunk out of her January check. And so, the teachers asked for a look at our leave policy specifically for certified. I'm gonna let Kristen, I'll let you talk about support in just a minute. But for that one, we reduced the amount of pay deduct. So, typically, if it's not adjacent to a holiday, or a natural break, or the end of the semester or school year, it's a pretty big deduction. Now, we just do a regular sub-deduct of $100. If it's any other time, we're only deducting 50. Average teacher pay per day, Cassie, I'm gonna just, like, $250. That's an estimate, depending on what level they're at. So, it was a pretty large chunk of change. And in respect for the, what we do, what certified teachers do, we want to decrease that pay deduction. So, that's the most of what that's about in that policy in terms of change. For the support staff, Kristen...
I'm sorry, Ms. Durkey, before you get too far off.
You bet.
I can't get to it. For some reason, it says the internet's not active. But I thought it was half pay.
Half a sub-pay. So, like...
Half a sub-pay is what we're holding out from the teacher.
Yes, half a sub. So, typically, it's a substitute deduct, meaning we're gonna charge you for the cost to the district to pay for the sub for that day. But we reduced it out of an effort to make sure we're not being visty about how much money they lose. I mean, we all recognize the monthly salary of teachers is not just exorbitant. So, we're trying to make sure we honor that. They came in with a big comparison, to be honest with you, about what kind of leave other districts have. And we want to be competitive with other districts. There's no doubt. But one of the things we talked about today, and that's not here, but they ask us to review leave regarding bereavement. Right now, like, we have emergency days that are available for deaths in the family, but a lot of districts have a separate line item for bereavement. So, we're just taking a peek. Our leave policies have been around a long time. Again...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, for sure.
Don't interrupt. But are these, like, vacation days? Or are these just like, I'm just not showing up because I've got something else to do days?
So, let me pull it up. Mike, I'm sorry you don't have access. Kristen, do you have a hard copy of that? So, let me just kind of go through...
So, this isn't a personal day?
It's a personal day.
It is a personal day.
It is a personal... So, the first paragraph would allude to your question, Mr. Noggle. "The Board of Education shall provide for up to five days for personal business leave for certified employees to use for situations that are matters of personal decision options, rather than for activities that require one's participation." And it gives some examples. Examples of such situations could include, but not necessarily limited to, accompanying a spouse or friend on a trip. That one comes into play when we get teachers that want to go on mission trips. That happens, not frequently, but it will happen occasionally when it's right next to, say, spring break. That's...
Fifth grade camp.
Fifth grade, yeah, fifth grade camp is one of them. Like, if I'm not an actual sponsor of fifth grade camp, yet my son or daughter is a fifth grader, say, I teach at Garfield, but my son's going to Pratt, then that could be a use of personal days for that.
But these aren't vacation days?
No. That, well, I mean, depends on how you look at it. We don't really have vacation days for teachers because it's a 180-day contract. So, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
No, yeah, they're not vacation days. We ask for them to tell us at least two weeks in advance. If you read the policy, there are districts that offer up to three personal days for free without any kind of sub-deduct at all. So, if it wasn't adjacent to a break, we were sub-deducting the actual cost of a sub, which was 50. If it was adjacent to a break, we were doing a full-day deduction, which was, we felt exorbitant, to be honest. We had never real... I personally had never lived through that until this year, when we had it happen on at least one occasion. And it just didn't feel right, to be honest, because we're talking about a teacher that never abuses leave. And so, we felt like now was the time to really do something different. They, the teachers have brought this up a few times, to be honest. Kristen's been in the middle of knowing, you know, this has come up. But we feel like it's prudent, specifically in basically the teacher shortage we're in, while we don't have a problem. By the way, I need to report that we had, I think, nine applicants for the math position, no, the English position at the freshman academy. We're getting applicants, but not as many as we used to get, to be honest. And so, we just need to be cognitive of, because they're looking. They're looking at what other districts do. As you know, we've held fast on we're not gonna reduce the number of contractual days. And they know that. They don't even really ask that anymore, which is great. So, with that experience, I felt like it was time to at least consider a reduction in how much we were deducting, deducting their pay.
What happens if they go over their five days?
Then it's a full pay deduct. So, you get on down to the policy, and you get passed. If they go above and beyond it, it's a full-day deduct. So, policy's always said five days. That's been standard. We're just asking for a change in the amount of deduction. After five days, or if they don't get permission in advance, then we could fully deduct.
So, is it 50 bucks or 100 bucks?
Right.
Basically.
Right, basically.
And if they don't use the five days, then three of them...
So, current...
Carried over, but can get added to...
Sick leave.
Sick leave?
That's correct. So, there is a sick leave bank. Their sick leave bank. Right, their own sick leave.
The next, for the next year.
Right. If they ran out. So, let's think about, most people, there are a few that don't have, don't, they use the sick leave every year. I get 10, I'm using 10. There are people that do that. Not very many. Most people will start clocking sick leave. I don't even know how many I have, to be honest. A lot. Because, you know, if you reach 120, by the time it's time to retire, that counts as a full year of service. So, it's beneficial to not use them all. So, most people do. But you do have those occasion, you do have an occasion where people have exhausted all their sick leave for whatever reason. None of my business, really. But they get to a place where, this has happened, they need knee surgery, and they don't have enough sick days to cover the extent of the surgery. That can happen. So, you can't totally diminish people that might take advantage of leave, to be honest. I think that probably happens in every profession. But at the same time, I do think it's important to honor the people that don't take advantage of it. And there's way more people that are pretty solid with, you know, how much they come versus the folks that use more. I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but then...
I'm good.
Yeah. Support, Kristen, do you have it pulled up?
Well, for support, it's, they're just a little bit different. Not all support staff, paraprofessionals get a substitute. So, first you gotta keep that in mind. It depends on what their position is, but not everybody does. Usually, if you're talking about a special education classroom, and they're helping to support teachers because you just need those extra hands, they get, but not every single person that's a para gets a substitute. But it wouldn't be fair to charge some and not charge others. So, there is a deduct. And all the language really did was change it to where that lesser of $75 or 3/4 is taken out, and it's just a deduction of 50% of the employee's salary. And it's just a deduction of fifty percent of the employee's salary will be made for the days missed, up to five days. And then, um, for full-time employees, fewer than twelve months, um, they get three. So the same thing would be, um, three days of personal leave at loss of fifty percent, and the language for the three-fourths was taken out.
These are support employees that are not hourly employees?
Support employees are generally hourly employees. So, yes. So you're looking at fifty percent. So certified would be salaried.
Okay.
The, the differentiation for hourly, for support, you do have leadership team members that are so considered support. So like, Ms. Pearson, for instance, is a certified leader, but she definitely is pretty intimately involved and leading child nutrition. So she'd be, she would be salaried, not considered support because she's not hourly. The same thing would apply to, I believe, I don't know, Mr. Anderson, if you're, oh, Cass- Cassidy's going, me, me, me. So Cassidy would be one, our CFO, while he's d- he's a leader, definitely, but he's considered support because of his position. Do you see, it's not a certi- it doesn't require necessarily a certification, a teacher certification, to do that job. It requires a lot of expertise, he happens to have an MBA, but it's not necessarily required to be certified to be a CFO. You should need to be really experienced in finance, so.
Hourly employees just don't get paid for that day, they don't come to work.
They get paid, they get deducted fifty percent of their daily rate. So depending on what their hourly wage is, they would be deducted for, if they're an eight-hour employee, for instance, they'd be deducted four hours.
Okay.
Yeah, that day.
But they get paid with the four hours?
Get paid for four, yeah.
If they weren't here?
Correct.
That's not an hourly employee.
Well, that's our policy.
An hourly employee, you clock in and you work an hour and you get paid for it.
I hear ya. That's true.
That's an hourly employee.
But they also have leave, like, they also have sick leave. So let's say, as hourly employee is sick, we don't deduct them for when they're gone, because they're sick.
Well, that's because they're sick.
Right.
Different.
Well, right, but we've always carried personal leave for employees, but that is how personal leave.
Doesn't make any sense.
Is applied. This is, uh, policy's been around a while, since.
Two thousand.
Two thousand was the first.
Actually, it's, uh, two thousand twelve, we changed it some, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, so here we are again.
Still makes no sense. I don't care how long the policy's been here, it makes no sense.
Welcome to HR in.
I mean.
School administration.
If I have an employee, if I have an employee at the ranch and they don't show up, and they don't clock in, they don't get paid. That's, that's an hourly employee. If you have somebody who gets paid because they're not, that's a salary employee.
I understand, I get it too. I was having the same question in my mind, but what I take to it is, we want that electrician to come back tomorrow.
Right. We also want the paraprofessional in the classroom to come back.
Professional to come back.
Yeah, and provide services.
Even the hourly employees, it's like a, it's not a sick leave day, but it's similar to a sick leave day, it's a personal day.
Right.
They can, they get paid for four hours.
So, you know, you're gonna have folks that are gonna take advantage of you.
Sure.
That's gonna happen with any position, by the way. I think any, you know, any industry, I think you're gonna have employees that wanna kinda skirt that. I'm gonna take my paid time off, my PTO. Um, but I think as a general rule, for the most part, people are pretty good about adhering to what the expectation is. And we promote the mission of teaching children, but we hit that pretty strong. Kristen and I had a meeting this morning about, let's talk about our mission, um, and they know. I, when you affect kids, then we get a little bit feisty.
Well, and every one of those have to be doubly approved too. So through our, um, tracking system that we have, it ha- it, it's frontline, not the tick and flee one, but it's called frontline. And it comes through, and the supervisor has to approve it, which is half of the approval, and then I have to approve it. So they're entering it saying that they would request a, a personal day, first has to go through their supervisor, and then in turn rolls to me. Some of those there are a little different, like the one that you were talking about for the certified person, actually went straight up to Sherry because they might have been requesting more than one or two, or a half day. Sometimes they only request half day. And that could be things from like, um, well, it could be bereavement, uh, or it could be, um, I don't know, I've, have to meet with an attorney because my dad passed away, or those types of things. And that's generally, those kind of things are what they're used for.
Is it doctors?
My electricity's been turned off, or I had a tornado.
Doctor's appointment, is that?
They can use sick leave for a doctor's appointment. It's more for things like my daughter's getting married, or, uh.
My house is being threatened by the fires.
Yeah, I've got a flood, my toilet just ran over and I've gotta call plumber, or in my case, a few weeks, a couple weeks ago, week ago, I couldn't get my garage door up. And literally couldn't get my car out of the garage. That was a true story. But it's stuff like that, um, that happened that is really sometimes out of their control, sometimes not. Wedding, I guess you're at the mercy of when your child decides to get married, that you really, you know, may or may not be able to control. So, a lot of them are legitimate reasons. It's not like they're not legitimate, it's just, you know, we wanna make sure that, for the most part, they're not creating undue burden on what we do.
So we, it might be off topic a little bit, sorry, but.
You're good.
So we teach a hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
How many more days do teachers have to be?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Um, our con- they're contracted for a hundred and eighty.
Uh-huh.
A hundred and seventy-five of those are considered instructional, so five are PD.
Okay.
That's per law.
Uh-huh.
And then out of those hundred and seventy-five, two are allowed to be parent-teacher conference day, and still included in instruction. So, a hundred and seventy-five, but technically with children there, we ask them to report a hundred and seventy-five days, but a hundred and seventy-three with kids. Because we convert to minutes, becau- and that's on here too, as a reminder. Then when we have snow days, we accumulate minutes in order not to have to make those up.
Right.
Otherwise, we're going past Memorial Day. There's no way you could fit that in, especially under the constraint of having to start school.
Right.
Within thirty days of October one.
So, their, their salary that they're getting paid, their contract salary, is for a hundred and.
Eighty days.
For a hundred and eighty days.
Correct.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay, I just wanted that to be out there.
And it's pol- that is policy.
But when they wanna complain about they're not getting paid enough money.
Right. I hear ya.
They need to think, they're getting paid for a hundred and eighty days' work. That's it.
And that, by the way, just so you're comforted maybe, or you know, that is policy. So we have board policy that dictates the link of a teacher's salary, and, you know, s- it varies with support. Like, we have some twelve-month support employees, like Mike was saying, our plumber. We wanna be able to call him over Christmas break if we have a flood. In fact, I think Cassidy headed to the high school a few days ago because of a leak. I never did follow up. We'll talk Friday, okay.
Five o'clock, yeah.
Um, so, so there's that. And a lot of times with, especially with maintenance, those are transportation for sure, too. I mean, it's not like, uh, necessarily a seven to four gig, so.
What, what I will add to the, the personal leave for support is, we talked about clocking in and clocking out, and hourly versus, like, th- these are for full-time employees, from what I read in the policy.
Right, correct.
So they have a contract amount, the, um, for a number of days for the year, so they're eligible for full benefits. And so, that's different than an employee who is a timesheet-only employee, like a probationary or temporary, uh, employee.
That's a good point.
Just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
The last one, Ms. Durkey, the internet use agreement?
That's a cleanup. Um, Cindy, you know, powers that be in the background in the IT, um, because we needed to meet Google platform requirements, she made some additions. That was cleanup language to our internet, internet use agreement. I don't see her, but that's.
I can tell you that, that would be number four, if you all can pull that up, four through the rest of that page, and then on to the top of, um, well, it says page two at the top of that. But where it reads Sands Springs Public Schools Internet Use Agreement, and it goes to number five, that's not any language. So all the rest of that has to do with terms of agreement for Google that are mandatory, because that's the platform that we use.
Big, the third-party apps is the reason that we had to add that. Google insisted that we do that, and so we pulled that language straight from there. So we had a small, um, piece of that in there, but we added to it because Sean and I didn't feel like it was strong enough to cover us in that case. And so we wanted to be able to meet that requirement, so that's why we did it. And we put it in O L R, so that's why it's here.
Very good. Any questions anybody have about any of the, uh, five policies? Additional questions?
I'll make a motion, we accept all five policy revisions.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Noggle, a second by Ms. Handland to approve the five policies listed. Call for vote, please.
Handland.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye, item forty-two. This is where we get into changing the days because of the snow and ice.
Exactly. So every year, there's a revision of some sort. This year, we're s- we had seven inclement weather days. And so, what we have to do is show a minutes-to-hours worksheet and upload those in accreditation. It requires board action in order to do that. Because essentially, you're making a change in the approved calendar that you approved in March of last year. So this is typical, happens every year. I feel like, I don't know that I've had a year where there wasn't some inclement weather, we haven't had a change. And this is, the allowance going to minutes keeps us from having to continue into June, to be honest.
Call for a motion to approve the change in the instructional calendar for school year twenty-five due to inclement weather?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Handland, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Spoon. Any further questions or discussion? Call for vote, please.
Handland.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye, item forty-three, uh, proposed approval to accept bids for the central administration access control and alarm system, and award a bid to V I P Technology Solutions Group as a low responsible bidder amount of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, so.
I know. W- we have inundated systems, as you know, but as we're making changes to, to buildings, and this was a pretty big remodel that we've done over time, um, we've changed it. We're gonna change it up, make it right. As the new addition goes up, you're gonna see that as part of the Boyd contract, too. Um, you might remember, I'm sure you do, that when we proposed the bond package in twenty-twenty-four, um, those were key components. New FOB system district-wide, and this just saves us money later on making that conversion. Cindy's peeking around the corner, you wanna come talk about it?
You just thought you were getting off easy.
So this building will be one of the more expensive buildings that we do because it does have twenty-four FOB doors.
Who designed that? Twenty-four what?
It has twenty-four FOB doors, like, twenty-four doors that, that have FOBs. And so, because it's, and that spans this entire, that's not just the new addition, that expands this entire building. And we did, um, have two different bids for that, and this bid came in, off the top of my head, almost seventy thousand dollars cheaper than the other one. But I do feel like we've done lots of business with them, and I do feel like that, that we're okay with that. But this will be one of the more expensive buildings that we do.
So we have used V I P before, instead of that inner, whatever it was?
Yes, we have used V I P before, um, for, uh, for our phones, for instance, our new phones, for instance, were provided by V I P Solutions. They also provide, um, our off-site backup, and so that if we had a natural disaster for the school, we could spin it up in the cloud so that we could be back up within twenty to four to forty-eight hours. Um, so they do all of those things for us and have been a very reputable bender. I also did business with them before I came here to Sandspring Schools.
This building, you have to remember, is partitioned. So I kinda tease about it, how many facilities do you have? Eleven? I mean, it depends on how you look at this building, because we've segregated it into enrollment center, virtual, we have page academy, and then that little piece of community services. Every one of those has a FOB door, and then, of course, this building, which is central office finance. A little bit tendency to be a little bit more picky about where the personnel records, where our finance records are housed, to be honest about it. But it's, it's funny, like, we say that, and I'm like, I don't know how many, depends on how you look at central. Because we could count it as one, or truly, it's segregated into pieces, which is how it was built, so.
And just I T has four FOB doors within it, because I have to protect my server room, I have to have, I have two entrances, they both have to be FOBbed. And so, we, just I T itself has, you know, four, four FOBs.
I'm pretty sure it's easier to get, to see the president than it is to go see her.
Right. We did it just for you, Mr. Noggle.
I know.
You try to get in and see Ms. Durkey without her knowing you're coming, you gotta stop it.
Oh, I, I couldn't even get in the building.
I tell you.
They're like, no.
Listen.
That also includes an alarm system as well, because our alarm system is very antiquated, and I'm.
Right. Oh, shh. She did not just say that. You really can't.
Did these, they're, they're magnetic-held shut doors.
I guess.
Yes, they have mag locks and strikes, and then the access control, and then there'll be some cameras involved in this so that even if whoever happens to be the lucky person that gets to answer the security calls for the district can see from home if there is an intruder and we in fact need to send the police, or you have to remember off the top of your head when you've been woken up in the middle of the night what your alarm code is, and you're trying to type it in your head and make sense of what's happening. So that's, that will take care of that as well, so.
Alarm systems are gonna be on the bond list futuristically, too, just know that, because they are antiquated. FOB, it's, it's been a trip.
And it also includes a panic system for, um, a panic button that goes in the secretary's office at the bottom floor and the third floor.
Reception.
In reception, so that they can, i- in, in the event that we have, that we need to lock down, it can be done very quickly, because we do house students in this building.
Who is the keeper of the FOB passw- not passwords, but control, is that?
Uh, we have a couple of people that do FOBs. No, well, you're asking.
You probably have access to every door.
I have access to.
Bo can only get in two doors.
I don't know, I don't even get in any door.
I have no FOB. I have no FOB. But, I have a push button, I can talk to the lady down there.
So, we split FOBs.
What do you want?
Oh, goodness. We had, so, in terms of like, giving access, not giving act, all that's approved. But truly, Eric, we have a couple of people that can do FOB access, so, yeah.
Y- any other questions? We're late for this, we ask a lot. I would entertain a motion to accept the bids for the central administration access control alarm system.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion of Mr. Noggle, a second by Ms. Handland, further questions? Seeing none, call for vote, please.
Handland.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye, item forty-four.
I'll make the motion, we approve item forty-four.
I second.
So you don't have to read the whole thing?
That would be to, to get our roofs up to speed at Limestone and Boyd, but I, I will add, I know you don't want me to, but, um, we've been working really hard to get our roofs where they need to be. Um, barring any kind of crazy natural disaster, but truly, these are the last two that are gonna get some pretty serious mitigation, which is lovely, by the way. So, I needed to add that, because I'm really proud of having roofs in good shape here.
We have a motion for item forty-four, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Handland. My only question, is this the same type of roof we put on Pratt recently? Same specification and stuff?
Standards doing it, yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other, other further questions? Call for vote, please, on forty-four.
Handland.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye, item forty-five, going up into account, play referees.
Yeah, this is really just to keep it separate of the main activity account, because this is a new application and a new software system we're using. So, instead of giving out the activity account with all of the activity money, I would rather link an account that we just transfer money back and forth to. So, that starts with zero.
I'm gonna get all my stuff out of the way for the first meeting, so I'll make a motion to.
Approve.
Approve that.
We have a motion by Ms. Spoon. Do we have a second?
I've got executive session under my belt.
Got it.
Second motion, and I'll just do it all in one.
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Noggle. Any questions? Call for vote, please.
Handland.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Spoon.
Aye.
Mullins.
Aye. Item forty-six, any matter that could not be known, foreseen prior to posting the meeting?
There is not.
Just wanna make sure that we say something about Ms. Durkey's award, that there was a big old poster up there recently.
It's gone, oh my goodness.
It's gone, and, but you got, with the squirrel, so.
I have a squirrel and some.
Looking forward to, uh, to that evening to recognize Ms. Durkey.
That's fun. Yep, thank you.
I was just gonna mention the Sandspring Education Council.
Oh, Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Thursday night.
That's at seven, right?
It's at seven.
Six.
Six, it's, it start.
It's, I'll look, I, listen, I live by my calendar.
Is it Bright Morning Farms?
Yes.
Any other announcements?